Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, we're ready to start. If you don't mind, I'll just welcome everyone. This is obviously the workshop of the three bodies, the Economic Development Commission, the Town Council, and the Planning and Zoning Commission. Does everyone have an agenda? Okay, great. Our guests are here from Yale, and the agenda, really, I thought we'd just a quick introduction so that everybody knows one another. Mike Paul is the Town Manager.
Al Rose, Town Council.
Rose Angeloni, Town Council.
Joanna Maitland-Worth, Town Council.
Anthony Kendall, our Town Council.
Don Fucy, Town Council.
Murray Diamond, Town Council.
Joe Funnin, Town Council.
Eric Hodgson, Town Council. I recently was the Chair of the Economic Development Commission.
Congratulations.
Janne Fench, Economic Development Commission.
Diane Calicchio, Economic Development Commission.
Dan Arman, Economic Development.
Joan Tudor, EDC.
Doug Combs, Planning and Zoning.
Nancy Cloud, Planning and Zoning.
Fran Lasker, Planning and Zoning.
Thank you. And I'd like to introduce Alan Platas and Andre Harwell from Yale Urban Design School. And they're going to come forward to give you sort of the basic project overview and go through the items that we have there, and hopefully that will have a free-flowing, you know, discussion, question and answers. I mean, obviously, the whole point was to bring the groups together so you understand where the Economic Development Commission has been meeting, had the charrette, put some information together, and at this point, I felt it would be very valuable for us to have your input at this point. So I'll turn it over to Alan.
Okay. I would love to keep this informal, and I'm going to recap some of the issues that we've been working with, EDC, and try to leave some time for discussion and questions. I have met a fair number of you, obviously, EDC. I think some of you were probably at the workshop that we conducted on January 25th at the school, and I'll refer to that in a moment as well. But just for people who are coming to this, a little bit cold or have not been part of the process this time around, say a word about who we are. Andre and I are part of outfit called the Yale Urban Design Workshop. It's a community design center affiliated with the Yale School of Architecture that's been around for, going on 25 years now. And in that capacity, we've worked with towns and neighborhoods and cities and various groups all over the state of Connecticut, really all over the Northeast, and to some extent, further field as well, on a host of issues, including lots and lots of projects very similar to the one that we're engaged in with you. Towns have frequently approached us about helping them to think through the potential of particular areas of the town, parcels, corridors, parts of the town that are either experiencing development or want to be experiencing development. And we typically get involved at the feasibility study stage, where we're helping the community come together to discuss a range of options to get as many of the voices heard and as much of the opinion out as possible as a preliminary to trying to zero in on what the preferred alternatives might be for the community. Now, Andre and I are also architects and planners, and occasionally, we also help communities actually develop a particular project. But typically, the work that we do is at this kind of pre-development stage, where people are still thinking about alternatives, but also trying to develop some community consensus around a preferred scenario, so that when development opportunities actually occur, they're not jeopardized or undermined by a lack of open discussion that's occurred in the community as a preliminary to that. The fastest way to scare away potential developers and investors is when you have a community that has not really fully discussed their preferences, and then the developer has to risk their resources trying initially to find out what people are thinking about. And sometimes that results, as I'm sure everybody knows, in some unfortunate failed exercises in development, where the developer, in good faith, may propose something, but it's not at all what the community had in mind, and the developer, after investing a certain amount of money, ends up walking away because the community is not seeing what they hope to see in a particular place, on a particular parcel of land. Now, the parcel of land that brings us together in particular is located very close to what is effectively, I suppose, the historic center of North Branford, and certainly along the corridor, the Route 80 corridor that is the spine of the town. And most of the commercial development, such as it is, that you have in North Branford, is along that corridor. There is a certain amount that's not located there, a very high percentage of the commercial property, and a certain amount of the office property as well is along that corridor. The particular parcel which the town controls, I think most of you know very well, it's at the intersection of Route 139 and Route 80. It was formerly, it was formerly a ball field. And some of you may know that there are at least a few voices in town that would love to see it be a ball field again, even though I think the road configuration there, the rebuilding of the road has probably also compromised its potential use in that direction as well. I'll come back to that in a moment. It is a parcel of land that has two buildings on it already, one sitting close to the road, one of not currently utilized structure with some historic resonance at the elevated point above the rest of the site. It has one point of vehicular access, and that is off of Route 80, right between the cemetery and the structures that are on the site. Any of you who've tried to negotiate that entrance particularly, perhaps the turn left out of that entrance, knows that it's not an ideal piece of traffic engineering in the best of cases. The parcel itself is pretty illy, and it's not illier. The road, the DOT work, actually exacerbated the elevation difference between the principal lowline part of the site and the elevation of the adjacent road. There is a high point, as I've already mentioned. And then there's an old streetcar right of way, which is actually part of the site, which runs off through a relatively wet area at a low point in the site, and eventually intersects a notch of road. And that is, the total area of the site's about 5.9, 5.94 acres. So not an insignificant site in terms of its size, but the way in which the topography is distributed on the site and the effect that the road work has had on the site has made it a little bit of a challenge from a development point of view. Now, I should add here that some of you may remember that we worked with North Branford before, in 2006, on exactly this site. And I actually have with us this evening the results of that previous study, which are not completely irrelevant to the work that we're doing now. We were asked at the time to look at development options for the site. We developed several scenarios of different mixes of a commercial and office and residential program. Public open space was an ingredient, and we tested them on the site. And we developed fairly detailed plans at the time. However, we did that in anticipation of the DOT work, which had not yet occurred. And we immediately became aware, when we came back to the site this time, that none of those alternatives would be necessarily very easy to do on the site as it's currently configured, given the way that the road has changed the geography of the site. Circulation on the site is a bit of a challenge, and the elevation differences, not to mention visibility from the road to the lower parts of the site. So all of these issues are coming out this time around as we explore the site. The other difference is that, I think wisely, the EDC and with our eager participation, decided this time around to commission preliminary market analysis. And we recommended somebody that we've worked with before, AMS, headed by Lawrence Kenny, as people to take a look at the market conditions and give us some data to start with. And I don't know how many of you have seen the draft report that Larry Kenny's prepared. We prepared for the EDC kind of spreadsheet summary of that, along with some program scenarios that I'm going to ask Mike to pass around so that everybody can have, actually, I should keep hold myself, but everybody should have one of those in front of them. Larry's study didn't produce, I think, any conclusions that would come and create shocks to any of you, but he yet further had put some preliminary numbers on what he thought was a plausible range of development potential in each of three areas. The three areas that he looked at were commercial development, splitting that into retail and office development, and then residential potential on the site. And he came up, and the top figures, I apologize for the size of this to test my business as well. In the upper right-hand corner, just under the title block, there is a summary of the figures that he came up with. A range of potential for one to two bedroom residential rental units, a low of 25 units to a high of 75 units, a range of retail potential for 15,000 to 30,000 square feet, and a range of office potential for 10,000 to 15,000 square feet. If you've read the report, I'll remind you, or if you haven't read the report, I'll summarize by saying that I think in Larry's look at the site, commercial and residential came out well ahead of office in terms of the market potential at this particular point in time. I say that, again, aware that none of you will be surprised by that. The office market is very soft in the region in general, and Branford does not have a particularly big share of the office market. It has to do with location, it has to do with proximity to other things, not just the highway, but other kinds of services that offices typically look for when they locate. The commercial potential is perhaps a little bit more robust in this case. Given the size of the property, it doesn't lend itself to anything like a big box. That's to say, a super stop-and-shop, or Big Y, which you already have, or, for that matter, a Walmart, let's say, or anything of that scale. However, a mid-size box to small, something like a CVS, for example, or Walgreens, which usually pencils out in the 10,000 to 15,000 square foot range, is something that the site, at least in the abstract, apart from issues of circulation and safety, could conceivably accommodate. What we then did to begin to test this as a preliminary design is the larger spreadsheet. And we developed four scenarios, totally theoretical, that looked at different mixes of users on the site, in part to make sure that we were allowing for what is always the gotcha in these situations, and that is parking. Those of you on planning and zoning are probably aware that in most cases of suburban, that is to say, non-downtown retail development, for every square foot of leasable retail space you develop, you probably need a square foot of parking as well. So if you've got a 15,000 square foot retail development, you probably have another 15,000 square feet of surface parking. And the economics of the site almost certainly will not allow structured parking or decked parking. I mean, I think there was a proposal that somebody made at the workshop, that we make a big parking garage, put the development on top of it, which could be all well and good, but the expense of that, you figure roughly $20,000 a space for structured parking as opposed to a couple of thousand dollars a space for service parking. So we're probably talking about service parking. So we're starting, at least abstractly, to test those trade-offs as we look at it. The parking is most severe for retail, less so, a little less so for office, and less so for residential, particularly apartments. And that also is mitigated, to some extent, by the fact that if you combine residential and commercial development, they have different peaks, so that sometimes you can come up with a formula that shares parking. So that is a distinct possibility as well. Anyway, Larry's market analysis, I think, first of all, reassured us that if we can figure out how to reasonably get a mixed-use project on the site with parking and circulation, that there is a market for the scale of project that developer might entertain on this particular site. There are other issues, of course, that come up that we began to look at. I won't beat this into the ground because we probably want to talk about it. I think the most challenging, from a planning and design point of view, is how you get the circulation to work on the site. You've got a site that, at its extremities, is very close to a busy intersection. So if you have driveways entering Route 80, or for that matter, Route 139, if you can do it, even if you push them all the way to the limits of the site, they're still very close to the intersection that is already a very busy intersection. So there are challenges in that layout, which we want to be very mindful of as we develop scenarios, concrete scenarios for the site. Now, when we held the public workshop, we invited the attendees and the general public who were there to speculate about enormous, you know, full range of things that might occur on the site. And the things we heard over and over again at the workshop is that they wanted open space. Some people wanted nothing but open space, which was not exactly the agenda that the EDC had set for us. But it's worth noting, because we feel very strongly that one of the things that we need to do as your design consultants is to show that a good, healthy economic development proposal is compatible with, maybe even supportive of, some significant open space preserved and developed on that site. The other thing that we heard over and over again was, make it look attractive, and in particular, enhance the character of the piece of the Route 80 corridor that is in the historic center of North Branford. People were thinking about the library, about the cemetery, about churches, about the feel of a small New England village, as opposed to conventional strip-style development. So these things came back to us over and over again. Beyond that, there was a full array of fantasies that people had for the site. To be honest, there were some people who were skeptical of residential development. There were some people who were skeptical of commercial development. We heard over and over again, can't we do something about the commercial center that already exists on the other side of Route 139? And we tried to not ignore that issue, but deflected by saying that that's a piece of private property, and we were not being commissioned to redesign it at this point. But I think the message that comes through to that, through from that, is that what your community is looking for, if there is development on the site, is not the counterpart to what's across the street, but in a way, the antithesis to what's across the street in terms of how it looks, how it works, how the public experiences it, all of those sorts of things. And that didn't necessarily apply to particular businesses, but just to the general layout and appearance of the area. So those were some of the constant themes that we got from the workshop. And we have also, we presented the EDC with a fairly detailed summary of the notes from that. We have quite detailed notes, and they'll be part of the final report. As I, we think it's important, one of the things we try to do in these situations is make sure that people who take the time to participate in those kinds of workshops know that their voice has been heard, right? Even if we don't take their brilliant advice, we want to make sure that they know that we've listened to what they have to say. So we usually devote a section of the report to summarizing that. So where we are at this point is now trying to take the information that Larry Kenny's report has provided us with, and turn that into a revised physical plan for the site that will be workable. One of the things that we think we're going to take into consideration moving forward is the potential, potential cooperation of the owners of two recently sold properties that are immediately adjacent to the site along Route 139. If that property can be master planned in conjunction with the site, then our circulation options are broad and considerable, and we think we could make potentially more comfortable, somewhat safer and easier to negotiate a circulation situation. So that's one of the scenarios that we're going to be testing as we go forward, we think. And then, once we get to the point where we have what we think are, hopefully, two or three workable differentiated development scenarios, we want to have a second public workshop where we share those with community members, get some feedback and reaction. And then, based on that, based on what we hear from the EDC and from the Town Council and the EDC, we assume, we'll try to package all of that in the form of a report that can lead directly, if you choose, to an RFP, to a request for development proposals based on, hopefully, a consensus that has been developed through this process, so that town officials, the EDC, the community, everybody who would be considered a stakeholder recognizes a set of shared goals that a developer can then build upon and respond to, rather than starting completely from scratch and trying to guess what the community is looking for. Most RFPs that go out are very abstract. They'll simply say, we've got a parcel of six acres, we want X amount of development on the site, mixes the following. We believe that in this case, you have a better chance of getting the product that you will want if that RFP is also based, not only on the market analysis, not only on a quantitative specification, but also on a specification which includes quality of design, provision of public open space, if that's a part of the package, and also a kind of preferred arrangement of the elements on your site, and in particular, the circulation. Mike, is there anything else I should throw in the hopper? Open it up, everybody's been very quiet and polite.
Yeah, no, that's great. I mean, I think part of what, also in that process, as we move to developing elements, Andre putting the concepts or workable design there as a research in terms of knowing that we need to get an appraisal at some point on the parcel that is yet to be done. So, you know, in terms of understanding value, that'll be part of that ongoing process to get that done.
Mike, do we have, you mentioned the trolley line. Do we own that property?
My understanding is that it's part of this long tail that...
That comes down on 22, right?
Not showing.
It comes to 22, and needless to say, both in 2006 and this time around, we looked to see if there was a way of getting access or egress along that corridor. It's the elevation change at the southeastern corner of the site is pretty extreme.
Higher?
It's pretty steep. You'd have to, yeah, this is much higher at the back of the site, drops down fairly precipitously to that corridor, and the amount of site engineering that you'd have to do to make that usable is pretty traumatic.
Well, is that at the same elevation as the ball field? Because I know the building in the back is up on a hill, right?
Yeah, this is, there's a, that's on the hill. That hill extends almost to the back of the site, and then at the back corner of the site, it drops down fairly steeply to the trolley line. In fact, I, it's hard for me to imagine how the trolley got through there originally, but some of you may remember. I don't know.
Is that where that wetland area is?
It's also pretty soggy back there. And one of the issues, really, for the whole back of the site, is that while it's not in a designated wetland, it is lower line, and you would need to do, in any case, drainage. You probably, in this part of the site, you'd probably end up putting some kind of culvert in, and then filling on top of that in order to provide both drainage and a level surface for development.
Who owns that little parcel down? If you move that?
This?
No, I know that's the former Sun Tech right there.
Yeah.
Go to your, go towards Mike. That. What is that?
It's a good question. Remember, I think we asked about that at various points. That kind of trap parcel there. That's wet, by the way.
That's all wet?
And I think that is actually in the, we can check, but I'm pretty sure that's in your map wetlands, that parcel. I don't think it really does anything for you in any way.
Now, whereabouts does the access onto 22 come out, by the way? The trolley line? Just out of curiosity.
Well...
Sounds like you just have to probably just some type of bridge, no.
Oh, it's on this side of the church.
Yeah.
Yeah. On the far side.
Right, right.
Yeah, here's a little bit of that. You can see, it's a long pan. Yeah, here's the map. You can see, it's a long panhandle.
Because that would get, actually, that would get rid of the, trying to deal with a neighbor and, I mean, it's such a, it's such a nightmare coming out onto one thirty-nine there because of all the, and you can't access eighty there. It's too close to the intersection.
Well, the Sun Tech property already has a driveway of their own that, so, and it's, it's a reasonable distance from the eighty intersection as opposed to the current.
But how about the, how about the entrance into Central Plaza?
Yeah, it's right here. They're almost aligned, but not quite.
Well, you were talking about in lieu of that, having like ingress, egress onto twenty-two.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Sort of like, almost like when you go to the outlets in Clinton.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, from the high school.
We, I, we have looked at that. And it would be a lot, it would, first of all, the distance is extreme. Developer and his or her tenants on the site are not going to be thrilled with that kind of totally remote point of access or egress. But it could be workable, except the site engineering required is pretty dramatic. I'm not, I mean, I wouldn't totally rule it out, but I think it's unlikely that you would have a development on the site that would support that amount of site work. I mean, if this were, you know, really high at, I mean, we've all seen it before. If this were a super stop shop or a big, you know, a ninety thousand square foot retail center, a developer doing a project like that oftentimes does hillside removal or fairly dramatic and alarming things. But I don't think we're looking at a scale of development on this site that would justify real extremes of site engineering. Yes, ma'am?
The property that you said the town may have access to, that was just water, whereabouts is that?
It's just Sun Tech.
Just south on Route one thirty-nine. There are two houses right on the road and then a commercial building that's now occupied by an electrical contractor.
Across from the post office.
At the back of the site.
It's the former Sun Tech building.
Across from the post office.
In the back.
Is there, I always visualized a, in that particular field, residential and small shops.
Yep.
Having the, having a lot of open space in the center that people could walk around and sit around and do whatever. The problem is, again, how far can people park? You know, five acres isn't a lot of land.
No. We tested that in the earlier work that we did. And at least at that time, we became convinced that it could balance a significant chunk of attractive open space and commercial development and the parking that you needed. It was a balancing act. And a lot of it depends on how you locate the property and how you treat the parking and those kinds of considerations. I still have a pretty high level of confidence that those three things can be balanced out.
You could still have parking and still have plenty of green walk-around area if it was planned correctly.
If you.
And that satisfies everybody except the people that just want to, just want to ballpark. But, you know, you get your residential and it would be nice, I don't know if we could do that, but over fifty-five so you don't have a lot of kids running around a small section. And certainly the tech space for small commercials, small retails, if in a restaurant or something.
Yeah.
I think it'd be a place that the town would enjoy. They'd be able, as long as they could get access and be able to stop, walk around and so anyhow.
I think that's a very good characterization of a kind of plausible way to approach the site. And I think based on our experience with the site, that if we can solve the circulation issue, that that's doable. Now, understand that a developer needs something to hang their head on in terms of where their money's going to come from. And I think in the scenario that you described, without a major anchor store, it doesn't really stand alone as a commercial development. So probably there needs to be enough rental housing for a developer to understand that they will be able to make a project based on that. And then the shops follow on that. In other words, the project that you're describing is probably driven by residential development and secondarily by the shops. That's based on our experience in the region over the last ten to fifteen years.
If you have the access to the shops, the town will take care of that. The residential, to me, this town needs that kind of residential, you know, rentals because we're sorely lacking of them. And as I say, over fifty-five, first you don't want your kids and secondly, you don't want the tax burden, you know, schooling and everything.
I don't think it's a good site for family housing anyway. And so probably most developers would agree with you about the market, that it's either going to be age restricted, over fifty-five, or it's going to be young professionals who are not raising a family, at least not yet.
Right.
Because that's always a problem, because that's where we run into a problem in town with the residential property costing us more money than.
Right, and living in those spaces.
Well, your, I believe the figure is that North Bradford is eighty-six percent single family homes in the residential area. So, I mean, Larry agrees with you that there is a potential market for rental housing. He thinks that market is not, you know, two to three bedroom, it's one to two bedroom, or even studio or.
Absolutely.
Actually, according to the regulations, it's only a one bedroom.
Yeah.
There's no twos or threes, just so you know.
Yeah, it wouldn't be.
Well, the developers that I know that are doing small projects like this, usually what they do is they do one with a study.
Yeah.
It's studio.
Yeah. That's, that seems to be the, before they even go to places like Milford and look at the recent housing that's developed there, tends to be studio or one B R. And at the upper end, one B R plus a workspace.
First of all, I just wanted to say thank you for coming. You know, in the EDC, whenever we started this, we really wanted to make sure that we had a process that involved the key decision makers from the beginning to the end so that there was no surprises at the end. And we would all kind of have a consensus about where we were going. So thank you for being here. The second thing is that it sounds like circulation into and out of property is the biggest, the biggest obstacle that we need to overcome. And you spoke a little bit about possibility of, you know, working with another property owner to, to use a joint access. If that is not possible, what are our options for?
There are two, there are two options. Putting aside the option of not developing the property. One option is to improve that entrance to the extent that it is a little bit better. It's, it's not ideal. It's pretty close to the intersection. There's a pretty dramatic grade change. Cars tend to move rather quickly through there, although you probably don't want them to move as quickly as they're currently moving. I don't think another signal is an option there. And in a pinch, you could probably do a right turn only exit at that point in the site. It would take some, the elevation, here's the thing, if you, if you look at the schemes that we develop, that's the circulation we envisioned is exactly what we're describing. A loop from one twenty, uh, one thirty-nine over to eighty, or from eighty over to one thirty-nine. But at the time, the grade differential between Route, Route one thirty-nine and the site was not as extreme as it is. The DOT left you with a, a much more challenging condition.
The worst of the, the condition. That's why actually, because that, that entrance onto eighty being six lanes is, is a hazard.
Yeah.
It's really not feasible.
And right turn, right turn only if it ever works.
I mean, here.
Derek?
Yes. Well, we, you know, we would like to get to a point where if you're using that, that's also a right turn.
Those really don't work. I'll tell you, there's a, there's a right turn only that comes out of Central Plaza and you see people turning left or right there all the time.
Same way in Northridge Center, newer doesn't work. It's right next to it.
Yeah, it's not an ideal condition. It's not an ideal condition. I think that what the challenge is to make as good a site as possible. But it is what it is. I mean, one of the things is that if that building goes away, it is a much easier job to make a good.
Well, buildings always have a value on a site. I mean, there's no reason that that can't be incorporated within the proposed.
The Old Town Hall, but not the old school behind it.
Yeah, that, the old, the old school, we'd love to be able to save for some.
I don't know if that's on, is that on the historic list?
No.
No, it is?
I think it is. You think it is?
The site is not part of, of your historic history.
No, just that building.
I think the building's on the historic list, though.
You think of this school.
Doesn't matter. They call them down all the time.
It's not that old. It was like nineteen thirty when it was built.
The school building that you're thinking of is on Route twenty-two that's historical.
I don't think we'd be saving it for its historical value. We'd save it for its used value. It's nicely sighted. And it would be even more nicely sighted if it didn't have that building in front of it.
The only thing too, though, I mean, honestly, I mean, the elevation problem you have in there, that building in the back would almost have to come down. If you were going to develop that whole piece of property, because that, that comes up to a peak, right where the Old Town, the old, Old Town Hall is in the back there.
The driveway goes up and then the back, the back straight there is on gray with, with, with that building. But this building is also at precisely the point on the site where a nice piece of open public space adjacent to the cemetery really would work best. And so I, you know, speak now, but we haven't gotten any really strong campaigns to save that. And in fact, all the schemes that we looked at last time kept the old school building and took down that building. It's not, it, it, it's adaptability for anything that you would particularly want on the site is not, is not high, doesn't make good commercial space. Other thoughts?
You mentioned earlier, the parties next door to that property had interest in this property. Did they indicate what they were going to use it for or what they wanted to develop?
I mean, this property, their property. Well, right now, they have a, on a business, a successful business on that site. So I don't think they're under any immediate pressure to do anything, as far as I can tell. It suits their operation. They've spent some money on it recently and on the site. They've taken down some of the accessory structures. These three outbuildings are gone. That old chicken coop they're using for storage. And they're renovating, they've got one of the houses leased and they're renovating the other to lease it for residential occupant, rental.
The same owner on hold to those properties?
Yeah, yeah. They own both, they own both those parcels. However, we've had a preliminary meeting with them and they're open, they're interested in the potential of their property and therefore are interested in what the town may be thinking about for its property. And I think they're open to having a discussion about how those interests might converge.
Oh, and he just bought that piece of property recently, didn't he?
Yeah, yeah. And I, so I think the approach that we proposed to the EDC is that we do, as we're working on developing scenarios for the site, we do some very preliminary sketching for how a shared system of circulation and development might lay out and share that with them to see if that's something that they're potentially open to. I think it would certainly enhance the develop, the developability of your property. And it might also unlock some economic potential for their property as well. So it could conceivably be a win in this situation. Everybody on board with the, the idea that whatever we do, we try to have some attractive public space on the site?
Yes.
Yeah, it's not going to be a ball field. It's going to be more like a town green, small town green where you could.
That'd be good.
Because we don't have one.
On a nice day, take a sandwich, whatever. We have an ice cream shop among the commercial or a coffee shop.
If you talk to a lot of people in town, that's what they're looking for.
Yeah.
Could someone just go through our immediate next steps in the next couple of weeks?
So I think we're already starting to develop specific proposals based on the work that we've done so far. I think our next step will be at the next EDC meeting to share those first with the EDC as our immediate client. And then based on what the EDC advises us, that, that those proposals could be shared a little bit more broadly. But the idea would be to firm up the basic ideas so that first thing in the fall, when people get back from holiday, we would have a second public workshop where we would share those with anybody who wants to come, have some discussion, and then based on that, hopefully finalize a preferred scenario. And that, and put it in the form of a report that would lead directly to an RFP, if that's how you decide to proceed.
So that would be more of a filtered charrette then? You know, we'll have more of a guideline?
Yeah, I think it would be more of a discussion where we're presenting some ideas that we've developed based on what we've heard and asking people to give us feedback on them.
Well, let's get on it.
Why wouldn't we do, why wouldn't we get this thing appraised so we have a value? It seems to me like we're putting the cart before the horse.
I think it's hard to appraise it without knowing what its development potential is. I think the.
Well, again, but you guys are, you know, this is what you do. But it's from a developer's point of view, you know, they're going to come in there, they're going to look at the building, they're going to look at the old school. And there's so much asbestos and lead in that building and it's so old and a leaky stone foundation, that building's coming down. Then they're going to take a couple of big excavators and some dozers and they're going to take the hill down. They're going to fill the site that's low and probably you're going to have to go out the trolley. Now, we're going to have to cross the wetlands there. So what we're going to do is maybe create some other wetlands further in so that we take care of where we had to fill the wetlands. Maybe a fountain or something like that. Now, having said that, from a developer's point of view, and I've looked at this for, since I was a little kid, you know, the hill has to come down. And that's the only value to it. So we need to get a value so that we know whether we even want to put it for sale. Because I'm one of the old school people that think the whole site should be a gazebo and a town green. So without a value, if someone can tell me, oh, we can sell it for a million dollars and we're going to bring in five million a year in taxes, you might have my attention. But the towns have a way of paying a lot of money for things and giving stuff away when we sell it.
Well, I, I, I think that's a whole perfectly plausible information in terms of what might happen. I think if it's the case that a developer feels that the only way to do something on the site is to level the hill, which has a lot of rock in it, by the way, not to mention all the paving and the building, they're not going to pay you anything for the site. You'll be lucky if they'll take it off your hands.
Yeah, but again, two weeks, the buildings could be down and the hill could be down and the road to be. Yeah, but again, two weeks, the buildings could be down and the hill could be down and the road to be cut out in two weeks. So, you know, I don't know what size equipment you guys are used to seeing, but, you know, in two weeks, we can take the hill down.
I, I, I'm sure they could do it. The question is, do you want them to do it?
That's a good question.
And the second question is, can they put enough development on that site to justify the expense of it?
Well, I think even if it was to be a park, I think you'd want to see that thing leveled out like that, right? I mean. Absolutely, absolutely, because you'd still need, and as a park, the twenty-two access makes more sense. You'd look like you're going into a park.
Well, as a, as a park, as a park, there's no reason to, to level the hill any more than they.
Well, to get the access from twenty-two.
You'd need parking for a park.
Yeah, you'd need parking and access.
But I, if, if it were me and I were not doing any development, and I assume then the town would allocate however many millions of dollars you needed to make a park there, I would minimize the expense by parking where there is.
Parking is.
Parking already, because for somebody that, you know, go up on that hill, it's not really a hill. Walking down to where the ball field was is not, I'm sure it's something that any number of you have done before. So that, that gives you a kind of natural distribution of stuff on the site. And there's plenty of land if you're not going to develop it, right? I mean, I, I don't know.
See, on the, on the old school, I've sat here for enough years when, you know, even when it was still being used, that's cost prohibitive to, to, to touch that building. So, and, and I'd rather as a developer, level the hill than try and bring that building up to code.
So this is a good, this is a good, I mean, they're not mutually exclusive. They could leave the hill and tear down the building, right? But this is a good point to, for people to, to consider, which is if you're going to go out for an RFP for development in the site, do you want to allow a developer to bulldoze the site and level it out? Is that your vision of the site? Because the only conceivable option, I, the only development that I could imagine doing that would be something like a CBS where they level the site to, to a pad site, put a building in the middle of the site surrounded by parking with a drive-through window and that would be what you'd have on the site.
And the town people will have a holy conniption that you already have a big one up at Northford, you've got another one down at one thirty-nine. How many of those very modernistic drugstores do you actually need in this town?
You know, but the town has come to the consensus that we want a mixed-use property where it can be open to the public to use and we can develop some sort of mixed rental property or small stores. And so, does then the developer, if you send out an RFP, developers come in, do they kind of determine the value of the property? I mean, how do we determine the value of the property if the town decides we don't want to touch it? You know, we want to leave it as is? Or somebody comes in and they want to develop it? You know, who, how do you determine the value of the property is my question, I guess.
Yeah, I, I mean, there, there are a number of different approaches that you could take today.
Yeah.
If you decide collectively that you don't want to develop the parcel, that you want to preserve it as open space and eventually invest in making it publicly accessible as open space, then it has no value, right?
Right.
You don't have to appraise it, it's not on the tax rolls, it's a town-owned piece of property and it's open space. You probably rezone it, I suppose, to protect it if you made any significant investment in improving it. If you choose to go the development route, the market will to some extent determine that. And there may be a significant trade-off where you decide if you want an attractive piece of public space, you may ask the developer to build and maintain that for you. And the trade-off is you sell the property for one dollar. And what you get out of it is tax revenue and a piece.
A maintained mixed use.
A maintained piece of good public open space. So you don't get any kind of windfall upfront for the site. You get long-term benefit both economically and in the civic realm of the site.
I know a couple of the compliments that this group have been working on and focused was to establish a pleasurable destination that would enhance our tax, if you will, these attractors on this. And still give, because the majority of the folks that work the charrette, there was such a solidification of wanting to have open space, open space. Again, a comfortable destination to go, have a few other additional enhancements that would just be enjoyable, pleasurable to look at being here, but still be able to have that mixed-use factor so that we can bring some additional income to the town.
Yeah.
We know how critical it is because we know our, what we see with Central Plaza, we know that this is really one of the town's welcome signs.
So, one of the examples that I've shared with the commission, the EDC, is what's recently been done up in stores. Anybody been up in stores, Mansfield lately? The town and the university decided that they needed some more commercial development because the university had grown, but there was no real town there, there were no facilities. They, they wanted a town center to complement the UConn campus. And the development that they've begun, because it's just phase one, is centered around a very modest, I think it's maybe an acre at most, town green, very attractive space, developed by the developer, surrounded by commercial and rental property. It, it, it's not exactly, it's denser than what you would ever have here, so it's not exactly what you want. But it brands both places. It brands the center of stores as a place that has a center and that center is a public open space. And it brands the development around it as being part of that town center. So I think in our discussions with the EDC, the ideal scenario that was emerging, at least theoretically, is that we would be able to do both because they complement each other. They actually work together. That a, a kind of conventional development, commercial, residential, that simply takes the whole site, puts parking on it, makes a reasonably attractive new development, but doesn't give anything back to the town except tax revenue, would not be as potentially successful in both directions as something that also was built around significant new public open space that even for people driving down Route eighty who didn't stop there, it would be a visual attraction. It would be an enhancement of that area at the town. So that's what we've been hearing certainly from the EDC and I think from a fair number of people who were at the workshop. That's certainly the task we've set ourselves. But that's not to say, I mean, I, we'd be happy for purposes of discussion, and maybe we should do this, to draw up one version of this that's just a conventional pad commercial development that assumes that, so people know what it looks like or would look like if you did it.
So how do you stop? I mean, so, so when you get done with this and then if the EDC and you guys decide on what you guys think you want to do, then you go to planning and zoning and they rewrite the zoning books and rezone the land to fit what you wrote?
I mean, if it needs to be rezoned, I don't know that it will necessarily need to be rezoned.
All right, so in B, in B two, let's say I buy it, so I'll give you guys the dollar now.
Yeah.
And then I own it. In B two, I can do anything I want in a B two.
Not, not if, not if the terms, not if the terms of you buying it are governed by the RFP.
So a request for proposal is going to overrule the town zoning?
No, it doesn't, it has to work with the town zone.
Well, then you can't sell something in a B two.
But it goes beyond the town zone. It says that in addition to the town zoning requirements, this is what we want to happen on the site.
It still is a B two, it's just that when you.
So there would be an approval condition that you have to do this, this, and that.
It's decided that it.
That it'll run on the deed so that no future developer can change it and all that.
Well, so typically, you, if you select a developer, prefer a developer, they, they, part of the RFP is that they have a specified period of time in which to develop the site. And then their right to development expires. In other words, if you sell it to them, they can't sit on it for ten years. If you tell them you've got three years to put a spade in the ground and get this project going, that's part of the deal. It's actually five years.
Five years here. It's standard five.
I, I think that you should have the ability to incorporate in whatever layout you're coming out with to be able to take those properties and level out. You know, I, I think it's a much more, agree with Al, a much more usable piece of property without those buildings and leveling that out. And I mean, whether it be a park, whether it be a town center, whether it be a box store.
But that would be up to the potential developer.
Well, absolutely, but I think it should be in the RFP that, you know, it's able to be done. And we're, and we're not going to make them try to save that, you know.
So, well, one of, one of the things that's been pointed out.
If they can't, fine, but.
Is that, yeah, I mean, what you do is you say, in the RFP, we would like you to consider development possibilities for the old school. Tax credits may be, historic tax credits for renovation and remediation may be available, as indeed they may. And if, that, that is not an absolute requirement, if you decide it's not an absolute requirement, you say, we like proposals, but there is an option to remove the structure.
Are there any small city grants that are available to the, to North Grandford for this?
Like a steep grant?
Steep grants? I don't think, I don't think the town has gotten any small cities, but, I mean, I think you'd look at everything.
It'd be like a steep.
If, if the, if the town was to develop the open space as opposed to develop, you would certainly be eligible for steep grants to do that kind of work, sidewalks, that sort of thing.
Oh, and one thing that kind of bounced around, but if you utilize the old Sun Tech, that's a, if you remember correctly, that's a real dip off of one thirty-nine to get back in there. So you still have the same grading issues if you go out that as if you.
Twenty-two.
As, as if you go north on, on one thirty-nine and utilize what you have already.
No, I think it's not quite as steep when you get further down.
Again, that'll.
It's too steep, it's too steep for, unless you're the state of Connecticut, as it stands, it's too steep. It doesn't meet any of the zoning.
Yeah.
You know, or engineering for any kind of.
I would think that before.
The way out may be the old trolley line. I, I mean, I don't.
Maybe.
I mean, that kind of seems to me that'd be the safest route to go at, from what I can envision.
So, in a poll of this room, you, you guys that have all met and, you know, and I came in late and I wasn't at a, any of the meetings. So you guys were all thinking of giving this land away for a dollar?
No, we haven't, we haven't said that at all. I, we just want to see what our options are, right?
The thing is, when we, when we did this process six years ago, nothing happened. And what we don't want to have is.
Oh, believe me, we've done the same process more, more than six years ago, too.
Well, that's why, no, I really appreciate your perspective because you have a lot of historical perspective and you're a developer. I think your, your input's really valuable, but I also.
But again, I want to see it.
Well, I want to see something.
All, all is, all is a green, I'm one of those guys, you know? I grow fruit and vegetables on industrial land, so.
Well, I think, you know, I don't think, when we started this process, there was, we didn't take any ideas and say, no, that can't happen. We just said, this is open to wherever, let's come up with it as a town to see what people want because.
All right, so since you guys haven't said you're going to give it away for a dollar, again, why can't we go to a real estate agent or a real estate expert and get a value? Now, now we've got this, you know what? Put a square foot price on all your scenarios and tell us, what is this property, what's the developer going to pay for it?
How do you.
But we don't know, how do we determine what's.
What's that process?
Yeah, how do we, how do we know? That's my question, is how do we determine what the property is worth before?
Well, there has to be, I mean, you came up with this, you'd have to be able to take so many square feet of rental, so many square feet of this and historically know what developers are paying for that many square feet.
I, I think, I think as a pan site, as you described it, that if you level the site, if that's possible, and found a way to make.
Get access.
Access to it. And let a developer put an anchor store of some size, let's say fifteen thousand square feet, and some additional development. And the site, as they chose, you, the site would have a certain value. And I think the, one of the challenges of this process, and we're open to whatever we hear from folks, but one of the challenges is whether that is in fact the route that you want to go with that piece of property. My sense, and it's only, you know, based on the limited contact that I've had with you all and with your fellow citizens, is that there would be a lot of people who would be disappointed, if not quite unhappy, to see a conventional commercial development on that site.
Then do we, did, did economic development, you guys have a list of all the available retail property in town? And in your study, did you look at how many people try and open a business in town and fail in the first month or the second month? And we have a lot, just in Central Plaza, I mean, there's, and just right up the hill here, there, we have buildings built already that have never been a hundred percent rented. So are you looking at the impact that you're going to have on maybe having a little better location?
A whole different scenario.
Larry's study, Larry's study, in fact, if, if you take a look at Larry's report, he considered the vacancy rate and the disposition of current properties. He didn't, you know, do the research to understand every single story. But the takeaway message is that a lot of the vacancies are in relatively older and not very attractive properties that have not been invested in over time, that have relatively small footprints and are not, you know, not particularly attractive places to be. So the, while it's worth considering what the rate of vacancy is, you're not trying to build a development on this site that is playing at the same level as those vacant properties. You're trying to do something that's the best property in town, at least once it opens, not on the level with the places that aren't doing well.
And it kind of may be, it would be my vision, though, that whatever we do here will give other property owners more of an incentive to make their property more usable and appealing as well. Because right now, we're not, we wouldn't be dealing with, yeah, I mean, that would be.
I mean, if an anchor store wanted to come into this area, you've got the IGA that's been sitting there falling apart and I don't see where anybody who's.
So, right, so if we do this properly, though, if we do this properly, then that makes that property more appealing to invest in as well.
You, you know, the reason that's empty is because, honestly, because McDonald's should have never been in front of it. You're never going to get anybody big in that back store.
So somebody's got to, you have to figure out that.
That, that's always been the problem there, with getting businesses back there, there's no parking and.
There's no parking there.
Is there?
Not, not if the restaurants open, if you go here on a Friday night, there's not one spot.
It's nowhere near where the restaurant is, there's still plenty of parking in the, that hole.
And again, we have no control over that anyway.
On Friday night, yeah.
It can be developed into parking.
You can't even get a spot to get a pizza when you.
I think the point is that what we've certainly heard from the EDC is that they'd like us to try to raise the bar a little bit on this development. As I said at the outset, we are constantly, from people at the workshop, can't you do something about Central Plaza? And I said, well, that's not our direct charge. But the theory would be that if you make something attractive on this site, that's a new generation of development for the town, that, that will make at least Central Plaza as the next-door neighbor a more attractive target for redevelopment.
Like you've been talking about an appraisal since, even since we asked for money for the, for the social. Like, we've been talking about an appraisal since, even since we asked for money for the, for the social process, and we were talking about trying to, how do we pay for the appraisal, there's money in the budget, et cetera. I guess I'm, I'm surprised that we still haven't thought about, like, what, what's holding us back from doing appraisal, I mean, that seems like a logical step.
Yeah, it is, I mean, it's just, it's just getting to a point where the group is ready to say, okay, that's the logical next step to do it. And, you know, to this point, it's just been an afterthought, are we ready to do this? I think the timing.
It'd be a waste of money to do an appraisal unless you decided that you're not going to do anything with the property, like Al says, and you're just going to make it an open park. But to go to any developer at this point and say, um, I want an appraisal on this land, I, I think you have to have a little bit of a scenario, but the consensus is that you're going to do. And then he can say, okay, we have this many square feet of this, that, and the other, and this is now what it's going to be worth to me.
It sounds like we have two scenarios, it, it sounds like we have mixed-use residential with stores around an open green is one scenario. And another scenario is to develop the whole thing as a, a box store, so could we put out two RFPs to see what the value is both ways?
I, I, I would say, I don't think you need to do two RFP, I think you just need the RFP with an appraisal company, or one that you pick, whoever responds, but you get options like that.
Options, yeah.
Yeah, I think you can do that.
Because the property might be worth nothing one way, but it's worth something the other, and then we, then we all have to sit down and decide what we want there, based on what the value is.
You, you need to decide that before you put out an RFP.
Well, but how do we decide that when we don't know what it's worth, though?
Well, that's kind of my question, but is it cost prohibitive to have an appraisal done before anybody touches it? I mean, like what Al was saying, so we kind of know what we're dealing with.
Until your appraisal is a square foot of an open park, you kind of know what acreage is worth around here.
So, I just want to, I just want to remind you that, that in downtown New Haven right now, which is probably the hottest, uh, area in, in Connecticut, in terms of development. It is still the case that to attract the kinds of development that the city wants to see there, they're making deals with developers. They're not looking to cash in upfront on getting Alexion to, you know, they went and got a ten million dollar Tiger grant to do the infrastructure improvements so Alexion could locate there next to the hospital at the end of Route thirty-four, and I'm pretty sure that, like other developers in cities around the country, they're probably getting other deals.
Yes, a tax-deferred situation there.
To, to attract them to the place. So the real issue, I think, and it's a real issue, is whether you want to use the tools that are available to you to try to get a certain kind of development, uh, or you just want to, say, the property's for sale, do what you want to with it. Make us, make us an offer, uh, based on that, and take the money upfront, and get what you get on that property. You probably don't need us to do that.
And we've done that before, and we have not been happy with the results.
In other words, there's nothing I can tell, uh, the guy who puts the, the, uh, the, the generic fifteen thousand square foot box in the middle of a paved site that they don't know already. Now, in certain situations, we've worked with those developers to try to get them to change their product. And you can, believe it or not, go around Connecticut and see CVSs that don't look like standard CVSs, Walgreens maybe a little less so. Stop and Shop will work with a, a town if they're eager enough to develop there. So there are developers that will change their formula to suit the town, but that's a bargaining process with the developer or with the particular business that's going in there. But in general, if you're looking for a driving bank, or McDonald's, or, uh, uh, you know, a, a CBS with a drive-through window.
I don't think you really want a driver.
That's, that's, that's a, that's a formula, and, a, as I say, you don't really need us for that.
So, do you guys look at the logistics of the, of the town? And, and, you know, we're, you know, we don't have ninety-five, we don't have ninety-one, you know, we don't have Route one. And, so, if, if you were to build this, for lack of a better word, this high-end little subdivision, little shopping center, and, um, and when I buy it for a dollar, instead of, instead of doing the, um, you know, I would still make my plateau, but I would put my green in the center of it. And I would have the backs of stores along Route eighty, so that when you're inside this thing, we would be, it would be a feel-good area, but that's just me. So, I'd have a green of, in the middle, and kind of make it like the Guilford Green, so to speak, so I had all my shops around it, and the hell with the outside world. And you'd have to come in my long driveway to see it.
Guilford Green has streets around.
So, now, well, we'd have a, a road around it. Now, now I'm going to go, and everybody here, I don't know if you guys get to Guilford, but all of us here, I'm sure you've traveled this way. And I take my hat off to the guy, and he's losing his shirt, go out Route one, you know, go out a notch hill, head towards Guilford. And after, somewhere by food and beverage, there's the, is it the, like, East Gate and West Gate?
Yeah.
Beautiful building, you know, and that wasn't Guilford planning and zoning, that was a guy whose son made a small fortune on the internet. And he says, I'm going to build an office complex that'll knock your socks off. It's mostly empty.
He's building.
It's mostly empty ten years now, and it's so beautiful that no developer could build a building like this. There's, you know, stonework, and it looks like an old New England office complex, and it's empty. So, again, getting to the logistics of this town, that we have a quarry and a lake, and we have, you know.
Two divided towns.
So, and, you know, nothing seems to work here. Now, I'm all for doing a high-end something with a green, you know, however you do it, if that's what we end up doing. But for me, sitting on the council to vote to sell it, if I can't get my money upfront, I'm going to need to go all the way to a scenario that says, and we are going to get, you know, so many dollars a year in taxes from this when it's all said and done, because otherwise, I'm not going to sell it.
Well, that's, that's absolutely correct. Uh, I mean, I, I, I know the Guilford development that you're talking about, I'm, I'm, I, I think probably office was the wrong.
Maybe a couple of restaurants or something.
Yeah, yeah.
It's beautiful.
It's a cookie shop.
Or even a motel, or something like that.
That's why we're starting out with a market analysis of North Branford, of what's going to work here, I mean, this market analysis is for, is for us here, not for Guilford.
Right.
So we have a, a sense of what actually.
What would work there?
A sense of what actually could work here, which I think is a good, is a good place to start. And I think that, um, you know, there are two things, there are different ways to value things, you could either, the value is either the tax money we bring in, or the value is the happiness of the people, or the value, I mean, but there's lots of things that you can value, I, I would value getting some tax money and having a pretty space to beat, but, you know, I, I don't, I'm not a developer, I'm just a country physician. So, um, so, Al, I hear your point, but there's, there's other perspectives, I'm sorry, Mr. Rose, there are other perspectives in terms of.
You can call me Al.
Oh.
I've been called worse.
Yeah, I know.
By your pardon. But you can't beat me, but you can't beat me. So, go on.
If you don't, if you don't try, you can't win, anyway, but the, I'm just saying that, I think, I think there's a, that's why we want to come here, because we want to hear exactly on the floor, what are the, what's the opposition, so that we can come up to a compromise. Because compromise means everyone gets something, but no one gets everything, and that's what we want. I know that this year, we had a hundred people in, in the thing that took a, took an afternoon of their, of their life to come and tell us that they didn't want another RIDE, or they didn't, they wanted, they didn't, they wanted demolish. They wanted to demolish the Central Plaza, or they felt we were, that's what we were talking about. And they wanted to do something that was actually going to give our town some character, because people, whenever people say they love it here, people love North Branford, they love living here. And they want something that's going to give our town identity, and they want to feel better about things, they don't want, they don't, they don't like the people rushing down Route eighty, they don't want Central Plaza. They want, they want to be here, because they love here, they don't want to leave here, they want to have an option to go and, and sell their house and live in town. I mean, that's what people want, so, even if we lost money on this, but we kept people in town, and they were happy, that, that contributed their whole lives, I would be, I think that's, there's value in that. And I don't, I think it has to come up with what's most valuable for everyone, not, not just what is most valuable for the tax people, or what's, that, it's not going to be a park, and it's probably not going to be a big box. It's going to be, it's going to be something in between, if we're going to get value, any revenue back to the, to the town, that's.
It has to be worthwhile to the person that's going to do it, too, I mean.
Well, then they'll determine that.
Well, that's what we're trying to figure out now, what would be the most valued, like, if we can come up with a plan that says, we've already thought through this, and this is what we want, and we're not going to put up any barriers to you, because this is what we want, then they're going to, that's hopefully going to be an enhancement.
Part of the due diligence that you do when you put out an RFP is that you don't just accept whatever, you know, a guy offered you ten million dollars for it, and you check his credentials to see if he's complimentsus.
Right.
You know, and you don't, you want a developer with a track record for doing the kind of thing that you're looking to have done. Somebody who's, uh, proven that they can do projects and produce revenue and produce tax income for the places that they work. You know, it's not, it's not a magic formula, and, and you may well get, when you put out an RFP, some pretty extravagant responses to it, but you're in the position of control of that.
Where, um, where are you with the town now? Um, I'm going to have to put this, have we paid so far for your services, or are we on a running back? What I'm asking it really is, the bottom line is, um, our next step would be them to come up with, well, it seems to be its consensus. And then you've got something that you can say, well, look at now, uh, we can talk to people and see how much this is going to cost, what the revenue we are going to get.
Yeah.
Because God knows, this town needs a tax, you know, it needs tax money.
At, at a simple level, well, first of all, uh, we did get a small deposit when we started working, but other than that.
You know, what I meant was, I guess what I meant was, have you gotten, uh, do we have a price on the whole package?
Yes, we have an agreement with the EDC.
Okay, so then why don't we go the next step?
Yeah, well, we're going there, and, uh, the two things that they emphasize with us all along, both of which we do, is on the one hand, to help them think about what the development potential of the site, to help all of you think about what the development potential of the site is, what it might look like, how you can get some attractive public space out of it. The second thing is to help you conduct a public process, so that when you get to the end of this, people are on board, right? There's, there's some momentum behind it, you're not, uh, going to be starting from scratch with a group of people who are going to throw up their hands and say, why didn't you tell us about this? Or, what kind of crazy idea is it? So, the public process is a big part of the work, and the two have to go together. Because we can do the best plan in the world, and if the community's against it, you know, you'll have a meeting in this room some night, full of people screaming their heads off, and the poor developer will be standing there saying, oh my God, you know, I didn't know you felt that strongly about what I'm proposing to do.
Is it better to put an RFQ out instead of an RFP, because at least you're looking for the qualifications of the developer, whoever would handle this? And then work out that, with that person?
You'd still need a consensus of what people are looking for, though.
You'd need a consensus, but what you, with the proposal, I would think, would the proposal be based on one option to utilize a property or a multitude of, of options? In other words, is it, is it the option of a proposal to come in and say, I want to put this here, or are you going to put this there?
Well, we're not, we're not saying that, though, are we, we're just saying that, let's see what you come up with, but you have to follow this criteria, open space, access, whatever it may be. You know, then it's up to the developer to say, look, this is what I think I can do to accommodate your needs and accommodate my needs as well.
Yeah, two, two things, one is, you don't want to create an RFP that's so tight.
Yeah, I don't want to limit our options.
That, that, that a developer doesn't ever. Mostly what you're trying to control is the quality of the development, not the precise quantity. In other words, if we say, our, our preferred alternative is based on thirty rental apartments, and the developer says, well, you know, I really need to do forty-five, probably you're not going to, uh, that's probably not a deal breaker. But if the developer says, and my apartments are going to be, you know, X, and that's not what you're looking for, or they're going to be made out of, uh, concrete block, uh, that, that may be a deal breaker. You want a qualitative control as much as quantitative control. So other thing, the other thing that we can do, and that we should do, is save the developers some time. In other words, if you just do an RFQ based on nothing but the site in its raw condition, then the developer has to basically retrace all of these steps. Figure out what goes on the site, conduct some sort of process to hear what people want, or how they respond to their proposals. So we would like to think that we can save a good developer some time and effort in that regard.
So, it would be a little bit, I did a, actually, it was an RFQ some years ago for the, for the state, for the judicial department. It included, it was for a new courthouse, which was built in Middletown, and what we did was, we provided a list of sites within the municipality of, of Middletown. We said, you could do it here, 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 there were seven, listed, all that. There was a list of specifications, which listed and said, you could use this material, and this, 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 and then you had a list of qualifications that came in. And then the, the, the successful individual was a group with architect and a contractor developer, and they chose the site that they wanted to develop and how they wanted to develop it. Is that a little bit about what you're saying?
It's a kind of a mix, actually, I mean, what you're, what you're describing is sort of a mixed process. It didn't, it, you know, it's, it, the, it's not a full-blown RFP, but it has aspects of the kinds of specifications that would typically be.
It limited the, it limited the developer to how they were going to utilize it, and also in the site, in the descriptions of the sites, it also listed you could do this and do that with it. The building could be so, so high, and so, you know, along with parking and such, so it was all limited within that. And then, of course, your price is going to be based on how they, what site they choose and such.
So, should, should planning and zoning actually, like, rewrite the book on the two centers of, you know, North Branford and Northford? And maybe, you know, instead of trying to do this for this one area, do an overlay so that in our downtown district, or whatever we want to call it, our center district, this is the type of construction we're looking for, and, or, you know, make it a regulation that it's, you know, so that the buildings are going to be, um, nice-looking buildings.
I don't think we have that many areas.
You know, so anything that's approved. What's that?
I don't think we have that many areas, too, that are.
Yeah, but then if you, even if Central came in to be redeveloped, it couldn't be turned into a.
Yeah, it's, well, that's like pie in the sky, that's.
Well, someday it'll happen, someday it'll happen, so if you have this district that, okay, within these, this area, you have to build a nice building.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
Isn't it ideal, then, that whatever we come up with, and whatever we can all agree with, and whoever we go with, hopefully, whatever design we're looking at, that will be, you know.
Yeah, I think, I think what he's saying.
Then we'll stipulate that whoever comes into Central Plaza follows whatever we work on.
There is a state statute that is, that allows the creation of village, what's called village districts, and they are designated design districts. The original legislation, I think, had in mind areas with a concentration of historic resources, where the charac, the idea was to preserve the character of a sensitive and historic area. But town, uh, uh, one of the first towns, the two first towns in the state to do a village district, one was Brooklyn, uh, but the other was Madison, and we worked with Madison on their village district. And since then, a number of towns, uh, including some not unlike North Branford, have done that, and have designated areas, just as you've, uh, and what it does is it allows P and Z, or a subcommittee of P and Z, to effectively function as a design. or subcommittee of P and Z to effectively function as a design review panel to enforce the village district guidelines. So, the village district guidelines specify the character and the quality of, of development in a particular area. The scale, they can get highly specific or be more general. And then anything that comes for P and Z within that district is reviewable on that basis.
We do have a committee. I can't remember the...
I know, they, they do, um, they, they do look at some of the buildings there. I don't even know, what is the committee called?
Cause like the daycare center that was the old bank, that was reviewed by them.
You know what? That building came out nice.
I believe this site is within the district.
It's not an ingredient.
No, I think it is. I think the historic district go, go, comes out, goes down to where...
Can you manipulate where that district begins? Like, can you manipulate where, what encompasses that district?
Right.
I think it goes on the...
But you know what? On that committee, I think, isn't, I think Scott Small and Bob Griege and were on it, but, but it doesn't have any bite, does it? It's like they make suggestions, so if it was a planning and zoning village district, it would have bite. And here's, here's why I say this, cause so, because we could sell this and we could make a deal with some guy and he's gonna come in there and we could vet him and, you know, and he's done it before and now he hit North Branford. And he goes belly up in the middle of it. So, then it sits there for ten years and guess what? We're finally so happy that some guy comes in that wants to do a strip mall and finish the project that we don't have any bite, they don't have to follow our original suggestions and, and believe me, for all of us that have sat here a long time, we have an awful lot of projects that somebody goes bankrupt and then you're kinda just happy that someone comes along to finish it and all bets are off. So...
And that's what happened, that's what's happened. All of it down Route eighty and that's why it's in the state it's in. But I think you have a very valid point and I think that we should, you know, make a, um...
If we can make a village district, like, we have two villages. I don't see how it would hurt us.
Is that like the facade program we had a while ago? Does that kinda follow?
Well, that was, you know, you had to come up and, you know, there was money there for individuals that wanted to do stuff, but I'm thinking more, and we have, you know, architects involved with it, they, they come up with a good, you know, we, we pick out different building styles.
Consistency.
Say, "This can happen in our old New England town."
Right.
You know, not a cement block building with a truss roof and...
To help develop that identity we're all looking for anyway.
What's that?
To help to develop the identity we're all looking for.
Right.
Yeah.
So, that's something that could be happening simultaneously to us looking at...
Oh, I agree.
Right.
So, I think that, you know, I'm trying to think of, if there's three, there's economic development commission, the planning and zoning and town council, then each of us has, has our ability to block things if we want to. And then, how, how can we avoid each other blocking each other and try to work together? Because I think that's a really smart idea for the whole town, for the future, but I also think that we need to do something about this site now, you know? And, uh, I don't know, it seems like that's gonna take time.
They can do that while this is going forward and then whatever we adopt here falls in that village district and it's already done.
From the town council perspective, what do you, what's the town councils, what, what does the council think is the most important next step for this project? Like, what's the barrier that, what's the barrier that has to be overcome for the town council to say yes?
Well, I'm almost thinking, listening here tonight, that these guys have to finish what they're doing so that then someone can take what they're doing and tell me as one vote on the council, "This project, when it's finished, is gonna look beautiful and bring in X amount of tax dollars." Cause again, if it doesn't bring in enough tax dollars, I wanna gazebo in the green on the whole thing.
I think we've said that several times already tonight, that it has to go to the next step. We have to have some kind of...
Right, I'm saying you convinced me.
Good. So, everyone, so we're on the same page now that we all think that what's happened so far is valuable and we're all excited to see what the next steps are.
And then if it doesn't, I mean, Alan is absolutely right. If it's not going to work, if we're not gonna make any money and we can't, um, tax revenue and we, you know, then we'll just do it down park.
I think that's reasonable, but I think so that, that's what the value, that's why we wanna have this meeting. So, we wanna find out, is there anything that's gonna, we don't wanna get to the end and have one person or one group have the ability to say no, when all this work has been done for, for years now, actually. Multiple years over multiple iterations of, of this. And so, I think that's what we want. We just wanna make sure that we can come to a point where people, we can move ahead now to the next step and people, everyone feels like they have a sense of what's going on and where we're moving.
I think the only way it would be a no is if, if it was developed into something really nice that we all liked and then somebody came in and said, "Well, we can't make money doing it," you know, that would be the only no.
Right.
Other than that, it's just adjustments.
That's right, unless you have something to offer that's visual, it doesn't have to be exact.
Right.
But the whole kind of layout and the, uh, how you're gonna get in and out of the property and what that's gonna entail, how can you present it to anybody and ask them to give you any kind of realistic answer?
They, they gotta go to the next step.
Good. Well, this was very successful then. I think that, that was the point of coming together. I mean, no one wants to spend more time than meetings, seriously. But I think we, you know, from the economic development perspective, we saw what happened last time and we saw it's very beautiful, it looks great, but nothing happened. And we don't want that. We want this to actually move forward and that's, that's why we tried to do it this way, so.
We value the contribution of what your thoughts on, um, some of the comments that were made just a bit ago. Yeah, we're not on any main artery that's gonna get traffic everywhere to us convenient. So, what is our hook, if you will? What's gonna bring people here? What's gonna want them to come apart with, not just our community, but to shop here, to stop here? I don't live in, you know, I'm one of those folks that likes to go there on a Sunday afternoon, candle shops or whatever.
Ice cream.
You know, it brings me there. It's a point of destination that's comfortable, it's kinda fun. People make money there. There's no reason why we can't develop that kinda characteristic for us. Yes, we're farming communities. You know what? Um, I'm a transplant, I've been in town since fourteen years. We don't exactly have very good-looking strip shopping centers. They're really not. And even to try to do something to say you're gonna generate some extra interest in people to say, "Shop here." A lot of communities have a little bit different layout for their centers of town. People walk to them. We don't really have a lot of walkable areas. We don't even have very many sidewalks, even within those areas that have strip shopping. It's almost as though it's time for us to think of things differently, but I also totally agree with what your comment was there. Having something significant that represents the history of our town, build in, raise the bar for the criteria of the architectural aspects of things, create some new circumstance that others have to then follow through to be in alignment with what we're doing here. It's a lot of energy. You should've seen, if you weren't at the charrette, you should've seen the anticipation of the people getting here, the crowds of people that came. Um, I, I know that there were comments that there had been these charrettes at other towns who didn't have that level of participation and people were anxious to share their viewpoints. And I, I hope that when we do the second one, that many of you folks will have the opportunity to stop it, even if it's just for a handful of minutes. You'd be very surprised at just how many different perspectives put in age categories, but at the end of that day, there were so many things that were aligned. Wanting to have that green space, wanting to have something that was a prideful kinda little center of town to go to a green. Wanting to be able to have some things that make you feel attracted to, maybe it's a nice restaurant, maybe it's a waterfall feature or whatever. They talked a lot about that trail area to be able to take a walk on. Um, it's just that, it just feels like it's the right time, right opportunity and this was perfect for us to be able to share where we have been, where we're looking to go forward and get your ideas and contributions because alone we'll never accomplish anything. It's together that we'll be able to get to that next stage. So, I just wanna thank everybody for their being vocal and comfortable in sharing.
This, um, I think you have to bear in mind that, uh, anybody who is going to, um, participate in, in the stores and any retail that we put in there, it's gonna be local people. We don't have, uh, like you say, a ninety-one or a ninety-five, um, and we actually don't even have, I mean, every good marketplace should have a, a three hundred and sixty degrees that you can draw from. I mean, yeah, we, we do have that, but they're not gonna come from Guilford, they're not gonna come from Madison. So, it's gonna be local people. And I think that if you get the right kind of retail in there, and I think we, we can, um, they should be able to sell it. I don't know.
I, Al, I do take it, it's a, it's part of the town design district, so you do have the authority to dictate what the design is. But there, I, I think in what you do is you have to have it as, as a mix between both the town and whoever it is that decides to develop it, as a mixed use. You know, it would be nice to have a place where you can have a, have a nice green, you can have the town concert, uh, con, uh, concerts there. You can have, maybe, uh, we could start having, uh, farmers markets there on Sun, on Sundays, start doing some other things like that. It would be nice to bring, in other words, the town has to also be part of bringing the people to this site. You don't wanna have the businesses be forced to do that because, again, you don't know if these places are gonna be empty or, or, and then you're only gonna, gonna associate that person as if it's, say, a card shop, you're only gonna be bringing people in for that. You wanna be, have, you know, the town organize things and develop and use that also to bring people in. So, it filters back to the, to the, to the shops or whoever is, is in.
You also, you also have to have a good marketing, marketing of that area. I mean, the apartments will go for, go without question, but the stories are gonna need marketing. People from the town that go out and solicit certain kinds of businesses that you know that the townspeople will go to or you have a feeling that townspeople go to. So, marketing is a big thing if we go this route.
It's like in Branford, Branford, every, you go down to Branford on a weekend, you always see the green is active. They're gonna start having farmers markets there on weekends now. They're bringing people in and that filters down into the, into the businesses along that strip.
It'd be nice if we could get something like that going, you know?
Well, I know, one thing, if you put, I'm just gonna say one more thing, but if you put in a, what you call in a big lot store, I don't think there's a member here in the town council getting reelected, that's all I can say.
I wouldn't, I mean...
Is there anything else that we wanna accomplish today? I think this was, I think we've...
No, it's really, it's open for, for the, the three bodies to, to ask Alan, you know, anything you wanna ask. And I think he's, what I hear is, you know, the timeline is taking the next step in that we're gonna, uh, have an early report, preliminary report for early fall, uh, based on some, you know, two or three workable scenarios, uh, that are ready before the next charrette, uh, the second charrette.
When do you envision that happening, Al?
Well, I think realistically, it probably would be early fall. I think it's tough to do it in July and August because people are, you know, away or doing other things. So, you know, I, I, we'd be happy to do it earlier than that, but I, I think probably the timing is better, do it right after school starts up again.
But don't, don't you have to present it to us before we go to a charrette?
Well, that was, that was my point. I, we will certainly be working on it with EDC and we'd be happy to bring it back to this larger group before that as well.
Right. Yeah, before you do this. I mean, I could see that you wanna do the charrette in, in, for the fall. I don't know why, but, you know, that'd be fine. But in the interim, I think that we should stay on board with what's going on.
We'd be happy to, I mean, I think there are probably a variety of ways, uh, in addition to meetings that we can keep you, now that we've all met together, uh, you know, we can make sure that, or Mike can make sure that information and, uh, documents are shared and that people have a chance to look at them and then pending that, we'll get back together then and discuss it some more. I did wanna point out because somebody said, rang a bell. One of the things that Mike's, uh, Larry's report identified as missing in Branford is, uh, sit-down restaurants. And he thought that if there is an attractive piece of open space, the compatibility of that and a, and a good restaurant, uh, not a McDonald's, not a Burger King, but someplace you go and sit down and have a meal and maybe even eat outside when the weather's nice.
They just opened one in, in the plaza up here. They just opened a nice restaurant. You can sit down, yeah.
Well, he's been, he was established for a long time. He just moved there, out of a strip mall.
That's actually turning into a restaurant place now.
Right.
Central Plaza is turning into a restaurant place.
Well, restaurants, restaurants like other restaurants, uh, it creates incredible value. Thank you so much.
Have supper. Thank you.
While we're still here, I mean, one of the things I can, we can do now, uh, but just direction on the appraisal, I'm, I'm, I'm the opinion, I think, that we can engage a company to look at, you know, one, two, three scenarios in an appraisal in terms of value. Uh, I would, you know, bring it to the EDC to see there, but you're all here. So, I, you know, if we, if we're in consensus now to say, "Yeah, that makes sense, spend some money, put out a, a bid for appraisal services and begin to, to look at that." Uh, you know, that's the only remaining question I have, uh, in terms of the process. If it makes sense to do it now or...
Well, EDC doesn't control the money, so...
Well, right, but you, you've got the, you, you actually do. I mean, you have, the council's giving you that leeway and power to, to engage the, uh, Alan.
What he's saying, he says there's no money in the budget for, to do it.
Well, there is, because the council created a means to, to, to do that and to recoup the costs. Yeah, to, to recoup the costs on the back end.
There was like, we started with like fifteen thousand, I believe it was.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I have another question. Um, we were, I was under the understanding that Mayor Cantelora invited us to this EDC meeting to talk about the propane, um, that's being proposed from J.J. Sullivan. That's what he invited us to come to this meeting tonight for the EDC because he had invited them to come to town. And I, that's the invitation that was presented at our last P and Z meeting to us by Mayor Cantelora, is that right? You keep... You came to our meeting, our last P and Z meeting and said that there was this meeting Monday night with the EDC and you had the lawyers from J.J. Sullivan for the propane proposal that was gonna be coming into town?
Not, not for tonight.
Not for tonight.
Oh, that was my understanding was that it was tonight, that, because EDC was meeting tonight, but that's why, I mean, that's the reason I came.
Wow.
We're glad you came.
This was strictly for, uh...
This was for the...
For Fox and Road.
For Fox and Road.
Fifteen ninety-nine.
The meeting, the meeting that I came to was for J.J. Sullivan, yes.
Yeah.
But it wasn't for tonight.
And you didn't say they'd come to this meeting tonight for that?
No.
Did you say that you were gonna have any lawyers present at any meeting?
The next, I thought they said the net, they were on the agenda for the seventeenth or something.
For the nineteenth. But the reason being that, you know, we were coming to see if EDC knew about this and if this was their part of their economic development.
No.
It wasn't.
No.
They haven't, they haven't had a chance to talk about anything beyond, well, no, you've actually talked about a couple of different sites, but not that one specifically.
The one on Ciro Road, I mean, you came...
Yeah, J.J. Sullivan though, what happened, that was a entirely different, had nothing to do with the charrette or...
No, I know it has nothing to do with the charrette, but I thought the reason you invited P and Z was to come to the EDC meeting because of the J.J. Sullivan propane.
It was probably, so the, I know that we were invited for the, because of the, this, right now. And I think that, I don't know whether it's a miscommunication with, was heard wrong or what, um...
No, but that, no, that may, I was just encouraging, you know, to, uh, business to come to our town. J.J. Sullivan has been looking for a location as, you know, and, uh, I called them and said, "Why don't you look at our town?" That's when they contacted the town manager and...
But did you also propose it to EDC besides planning and zoning?
Actually, no. They actually went through the town manager and within a day or two, they had come into town.
Something like that normally wouldn't go to EDC, would it? I mean, would that be...
I mean, economic development wouldn't have a, a new business coming into town?
Well, EDC should've gone and found that business and brought it to us.
Well, that's what I mean, but I mean...
We don't send businesses to them, they're supposed to bring businesses to us.
Yeah, but you can't say EDC wouldn't know about, shouldn't know about it.
Well, they wouldn't know.
They don't have to know about it.
They wouldn't have to know about that.
Well, we're, I'm so happy you came to the meeting, you were really valuable to have, come to a lot of EDC meetings, it's fun.
Alan.
Done?
Yeah, I think we're all, I, you know, I just.
Um, Alan, can I just say one thing?
Send that market report to some of the people that didn't get it, like, I think the planning and zoning didn't get the copy of it, could you?
Yeah, sure.
I don't know about that.
I don't think we got it.
All the council members?
Yeah, we got it.
We got it, yeah.
We all got that. Oh, did you get that?
Yeah, we've got it.
Oh, I, I thought you said you didn't have it.
Carol showed that with you, I think, yeah.
I didn't get that.
Yeah, I got it.
I didn't get that.
I do, you might not have been.
Oh, it's in our package.
Yeah. Nancy, do you want one?
Yes, because I can get one of those.
Alan, I just want to say one thing, that your idea of making some regulations for the, the areas that would be under this domain, that's great, except right now we don't have a leader, so it's going to be kind of hard until we get somebody established. I think it's a good idea, but we do have to have an established, you know, the.
They did, I mean, what they did do.
Okay, I think we're all set.